Start the work session for October twenty sixth, two thousand and twenty eight. City of Warren. We're going to defer a number of items tonight. We have, I believe, two members of the council who had a call date in sick. And will not be able to attend the person or online. If that changes, we'll only council meeting starts with us. We're just on the way home. So the minutes for October twelfth will be deferred. The cornerstone design services will be deferred. The approval of the critically important too is bucket drug. Will be deferred. We will have the first reading to end the budget for this year for twenty twenty one. For those who can't understand how that works is the budget itself is one item. Then you have an audit at the end of the year. And they'll move some items around from one category to another category. Make it, you know, kind of as it as its action. And then the city council will support that budget. What it's got, so the difference is when you go budget at the beginning of the year, we have really no idea or we're taking an educated guess as to how to produce. Once you have your audit, you learn that we're at every single payment point. And after the party conference, the financial report that will come directly behind it. So all we're getting is the city council to endorse it. It doesn't change anything. The audit is done. So, that being said, it makes it really simple. So we'll start with Mr. Warren. Tell us a little bit about the launch and sort of good things happening here.
Yes, sir. Good evening, everybody. Don't get me wrong, I'm a little some cheering and smiling. All right. All right, so you guys saw the peanut. We did lose about four thousand dollars. It is better than last month. We're still trying to work to get that down. Since I last saw you on September twenty eighth, I've taken in fourteen thousand nine hundred and five hundred and ninety-five dollars and eighty-nine cents in payments. But I also did have nine thousand six hundred and twenty-two dollars and forty-four cents in cancellations, all due to COVID nineteen. We do have some in-house events coming up. Korean and I, we got together on Veterans Day for that's November eleventh. Also, the Christmas party, so everyone knows it's Thursday, December the ninth at six thirty. And it's going to be theme Winter Wonderland. So if you guys like the last year, we feel this year. And then also the Black History Celebration is now called Evolution. It's going to be on February the twenty seventh. So Korean has been amazing with that as well. We did sign a film premiere for a new documentary on Netflix on Hulu, excuse me, on December eleventh. We signed the National Trichology Institute of, which is located actually in Stockbridge for a two-day conference. And we actually had our first all-inclusive event, wedding, excuse me, for twenty-two thousand dollars that we're going to sign this week. So that's fantastic. And also, we secured Commissioner Damont Vegas's HBCU gala. We sold it from the GICC. And it happened at the, at the ball the other day.
Excellent. So we, we.
We bought, we didn't steal it. We, um, he's, right?
It's all flat. As will be on. We were impressed with the amount of money somebody spent on the wedding, but that's pretty small in comparison to the divorce. All right. Got to have some humor here, buddy. Got to have a bit of humor. Grant program update, city manager Jeff.
I have two updates on the, on, oh, the grants, the two different grants, kind of that are ongoing. Number one is the signs grant. If you're not familiar, Mayor Council voted to, to use some of our funds to fund fifty percent of our business and our Plaza owners' sign replacements and our upgrades. That information is now on the marquee. We'll point people into that as well as our social media pages. Should all have some information regarding that. It was also emailed out to anybody that has had email contact with some of our TA groups before and all that. The application is located on the website. It's fairly prominent. It's up underneath the announcements, right? We, we, we posted up underneath downstairs. It's one little highlighted section on the right side. It's, it's fairly prominent. I looked at it today to make sure it kind of sticks out right there. So that, that went out Friday. As of today, we don't have any applications. So if you know some people who might could use some sign upgrades, if you'll point them in that direction, that would be great to encourage them to take advantage of that. They can now upgrade their sign for half the price that they would normally. The other grant is in regards to the, uh, the, the ARBA funds that funded the supplemental pay, the grant for first responders. And Mayor Council so graciously matched that and actually included some of the other employees on that matching amount. And that application was submitted on Thursday, Thursday of last week, I believe, is when the finance director reports that he got the application in, so it's sent in. That's not a competitive process. We get that. So that, that application has been submitted, is on its way, and we expect that funding to come in pretty soon behind that. So that's about two grand. Thanks.
Sweet. So I have, excuse me, go ahead. I have one more thing, guys. I'm so sorry, brother. I forgot this. So this right here is going to be over here, it's a sign sheet. We are starting to add more preferred caterers because the Marlin Center for twenty twenty two will no longer accept outside catering. So putting together a tasting team. So if anybody, it's a four-course tasting, they have to provide a four-course meal. Anyone's welcome to sign up. I mean, four people per. So it's going to be four courses with a mousse, bouchette, and a dessert, and wine, and the four pairings. It's going to happen Tuesdays and Thursdays between two and four. If anybody's interested, sign up and I'll, I'll get you for a nice little treat.
Time, yeah.
Okay.
One of the things on the sign grant, I talked to one of the local businesses. I, I think the reason they're going to come in a little slow is down in the bottom section, you know, it talks about, you know, how many tenants you have and what is your deal. In other words, I'm reading it the way that he was reading it. It, it kind of gives you the full, you know. So let's say, here's a, here's a picture of my sign. I'm going to go to a sign company. I'm going to have them kind of professional, give me a render as to what, you know, I'm going to have, and even I'll ultimately have the price together with that. Because this particular grant is just wants to make sure he stays within our numbers. I don't, he's got a smaller job, I'm saying, so I don't, I don't think he's going to push, you know, our limits at all. But he just wants to know what, you know, it's just going to be good, kind of immediate advice is what I want to go is what it's going to cost. I would give it that. It implies that in the grant.
I have a question. I, I, not to know you with how that works, but do the businesses pay any part of having their name on those signs or is it just the mall?
Well, as part of the total signage, there's going to be a total cost. And in that case, it wouldn't be any, any greater number than twenty thousand as a maximum cost. Depending, depending on which shopping center it is, some of them are just simply paying the cost. So they should, because it should be a total number. And I, I think they can build a sign within that number.
Oh, yeah. Did you remember, I, I, I believe at one of the council meetings, I submitted a mock-up drawing, a pretty nice sign, and they said that one would be. And it was a nice sign with a lot of different slides on it. It came in, it, it's somewhere just over thirty thousand. It was a big, nice sign, you know, with some of the considerations. So, yeah, if you're looking to go upwards of forty thousand dollars, you're getting a really nice time. Yeah, I think so. Most people, I think, should be coming underneath that number.
Sure. All right. Any questions? AEDs.
Good evening. Yeah, so the police department has been giving some consideration to how we're uniquely situated to quickly respond to different emergencies, what our capacity is to meaningfully intervene during those emergencies, and where we're situated to, to make public contact. So I've got three related things to share with you. The first is that we are in the process of receiving quotes and seeking grant funding for AEDs. The National Heart Association tells us that about three hundred and forty-nine thousand cardiac arrests occur outside of a medical facility every year. That one has about a ten percent survival rate. However, when an AED is introduced, the survival rate raises to about forty percent. Our police officers are patrolling the streets. We have the capacity to respond.
Is that like a defibrillator?
That's right. An automated external defibrillator. And so our police officers can respond. The training is very simple to administer that and can deliver a shock. We know that improves patient outcomes, like I said, as high as forty percent during a cardiac emergency. So we are in the early stages of submitting a grant application to Firehouse Subs. They have public safety grants that could fund a portion of the AEDs. We've received a couple of quotes, looking for the best deal that we can find. On a device that will also be compatible with those devices that are being used by our fire department. In addition, we know that opioid overdoses continue to increase throughout the country. There are drugs that are available that can be administered under Georgia law that allows police officers to administer those drugs, specifically Narcan or naloxone. There's some grant funding available for that that we're pursuing as well. We may also have some, some money available to, to make that purchase. But the idea is to equip each of our patrol officers with Narcan so that they could respond to an opioid overdose and reverse that overdose, potentially bringing that person back to life. And the last thing that we're pursuing is a real-time alerting system. A couple of platforms that are available for this, one is called Rave, one is called Nixle. Some people may be aware of those. These platforms, again, because our police officers are first responders to the scenes, give us an opportunity to send real-time alerts during a weather emergency, a serious emergency where someone or a neighborhood needs to shelter in place or evacuate. It just increases the capacity of the police department to inform the public about the events that are happening around them. So a few more conversations to have on those, to see that pricing come in and hope to have something to present very shortly.
How does that last one work? Is that like Amber Alert or something like that? Is that going across?
Yeah, very, very similar. So a couple of different mediums. Nixle will actually tie in across all of our existing social media platforms. So it will post on our Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, Nextdoor pages directly. There's also a Nixle app, which can be a standalone app downloaded to iPhones or through the Android store. And then the final way is through text messages or reverse phone calls. So the system is set such that we could, during a true emergency where people either needed to shelter or evacuate, we could push that as a phone call or a text message. And for all of the other alerts that we wanted to send, both emergency and non-emergency, each citizen can opt in and say that they want to receive emails or text messages or phone calls or all three.
Questions?
I think we've had conversations about, and I, she's went, I'm sure you can respond to this, pushing out phone calls to older residents because that's going to be the medium that they're going to be informed by, just picking up calls. So there's going to probably be some value to having phone calls, a system that can make phone calls so that older residents can be notified.
Yes, ma'am. I think you're right.
I spoke with Jeff regarding the program about the lock boxes. Did we ever get any feedback on that?
Good. So that was a, a grant that we applied for back in the spring, I believe. And about two weeks ago, I got a notification, we did not get the grant. And that was for the residential key boxes. And then we carry the key on fire trucks to open those up to get to the LVA or the disabled or whatever. So I would like to make a proposal, maybe one of the next upcoming council meetings for the council, just to purchase those outright, since we did not get the grant. What kind of money would you talk about? They come in lots of thirty. I think I figured thirty was like five thousand dollars, six thousand, something like that. Then we would need to purchase two additional boxes, one for each ambulance. Right now, we just carry the keys on fire trucks. But with these residential boxes, it's more for medical calls than it is fire calls. So we'd need two secure boxes to put on the ambulance, says those are about fifteen hundred apiece, I think.
Right. I think with the population aging that we're seeing, perhaps a need for that more because people are falling inside, no one, you know, know that they're, I understand you all, Mr. Chinnell's, I was the other day, because he was in his yard, so, yeah.
I can present that upcoming, maybe July.
Okay. And I had a question for.
Yes, ma'am.
As far as getting the, for opioid overdose, how, how, how would you know that they have overdosed on opioids?
So our officers will be trained to look for things like drug paraphernalia or evidence of drugs around. Quite often, what we are finding in overdose situations is that in addition to paraphernalia being present, very often, there is another person present who states that it's an overdose. And one of the great things about naloxone is that when it's administered, it really does no harm. In other words, if you have not overdosed, it won't make the situation worse. But if we administer it and you have overdosed, it's very likely to make it better.
And if there was some other drug in your system other than that?
The, the naloxone is only an opioid reversal drug, so it wouldn't necessarily reverse an overdose from another substance.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Get a little presentation on some city management. Ms. Corina.
Hello. Good evening. I have a letter presentation for you all. For those who don't know, I'm the event coordinator for the city. My name is Corina. And I'm here to talk about tonight, just about a few events coming up and then a few past events as well. First, where we want to start with our past events. The first one will be Hippie Fest. I've attached a few pictures here. I'm not sure if you can see them very well, but these are some very great pictures. For the band, we had vintage patients. I believe everyone had a really good time with them, very good music to the theme, all of that. Some of the food trucks included candy roll treats. They sold different variety of treats, slushies. We also have a Tuna's plant-based food truck, which is kind of tied in also with the theme. We also have caricatures being drawn, t-shirt printing, jewelry, Bohemian clothes, anything dealing with Hippie Fest. Next is our Dia de los Muertos, which is Day of the Dead, which was this past Sunday. I've attached a few pictures here as well. We had mariachi for entertainment, marimba, other cultural Hispanic dances. We had tacos, we had sweets, excuse me. We also had Banda Muerte, which is called Bread of the Dead. And amongst other Mexican goodies, we had a very good turnout for this event, so I was really, really excited about that, as well as the Hippie Fest as well. Everyone seemed to have enjoyed it. Now we're going to go for the upcoming events. First, we have St. Pauline, which is this Sunday from five to eight here at City Hall. We're going to have candy, cotton candy, popcorn giving out, I believe, the whole, the city's going to give out candy. Fire and police is also going to give out candy. We're also going to have Scruggan's Funeral Home come and give out candy as well. I believe in image, but I'd have to check on that as well.
And the Fever Home, now that's cool. What kind of candy do you think they would do?
John, they did one other time, and one of us dressed up, and it was scary.
For the food trucks, we have Drive Turkey, which is barbecue food. And then we also have candy roll treats. I thought that would be like a good addition for the kids. Excuse me. And then we also have Miami Palm Island. He's been with us for the Food Truck Mondays. Like I mentioned, Scruggan's Funeral Home activities, which include ballistic swings, bungee jobs, bouncy houses, all some good activities for the kids. Next, in November, we have our Veterans Day, which will be, uh, excuse me, which will be November eleventh at eleven, and this will be held at the Memorial Center. I've attached a few pictures from last year. So we have Representative Mike Blatton as one of our speakers. He is confirmed. We also have photography confirmed, which will be a professional photographer. We also have caterers set up. Everything is already set and ready to go. Working on the rehearsal, which should be out by the end of this week. And we will also have a tribute to General Colin Powell. And lastly, we have Christmas in the Park. We already have all of the crucial components confirmed already. Games confirmed, we're going to have ballistic swings, bouncy houses, and a bungee job. We're also going to have Ferris wheel, that is also confirmed. For the food trucks, we're going to have Papa's Hot Dose and Rats, the Bonk Ate Guys, and a little bit of tacos, which is the Mexican culture. And I'm also waiting for Noronca Longtime, which is a Filipino cuisine food truck. That way we'll have a variety of food for everyone. And Santa Claus is ready. Yeah. Come from New York.
North, it was worth it. We did this.
So you all may be wondering how we market all of these events and how we get people to come out. Right now, what we do is we put all of our flyers on the marquee. We also blast out on all social media, which include events page, city web, city, and the website as well, Fire and PD as well. For those who don't know, we have handles for the events page, which is at City of Moro Events. You can easily find it. It's right under the City of Moro's Facebook page, on Facebook and Instagram. We also do event live, uh, email blasts once a week. Email, we have the email contacts from several raffles that we've done at some of our events, and as well as website contacts that we've gotten through people who sign up on the website. And we're also doing Eventbrite for all of these. I figured Eventbrite not only targets the county and the actual city, but it also targets Metro Atlanta as well as surrounding areas. And I found that most of our event goes for Eventbrite, uh, for Hippie Fest, excuse me, came from Eventbrite. So that is a very good tool that I'm going to use more often now, and I know that it gets a lot of people to come out, especially if it's a free event. And then lastly, our new marketing strategies that I've been working on for the past several weeks. We have a new social media committee. We just met today. It'll be myself, I believe Mr. Moss will be there in and out as well. We have Fire and PD. We're all going to share different strategies for marketing, new ones that we've learned, what works best for us. That way we can all just bring a lot of people to events or to wherever the city is doing. I've also joined through the event page Facebook groups. As you can see, some of these carry up to six thousand people. These groups allow me to post a flyer several times a day, and it just gets to a lot of people. It also gets to Alabama, Florida, and Tennessee, and South Carolina. So I just thought that would be like a great addition. All of these are either in Clay County or in the Adman area. And that concludes the presentation. If anyone has any questions?
One comment I do want to make is as we, the Hippie Fest was awesome, and Day of the Dead was awesome. When we're partnering with organizations that are kind of doing the planning, let's make sure that we're engaged with them, they understand their responsibility on their social media outlets for marketing as well. If it has to be in writing, then let's move towards that so that we have, you know, a better understanding. We're communicating in a way to let them know they have a responsibility for, for marketing as well. It may not be a dollar amount, but it is a commitment with time with social media posts.
Corin, do you think?
Questions? Yeah. Good.
And we have a G O T planning.
Yes.
And I just saw the thing on Evolution, he's gone, so who cares? What's on? Okay. Thanks. All right. We have a little bit of time here, so I'll need to ask Kyle to give us some updates on some of the things that are happening. It's very.
What can I give an update on? Does anybody have questions about anything that?
The truck?
We got, we got, we don't have a quorum. We can't purchase a truck.
Oh, that's right.
They're, they're a massive problem. But we'll, we'll work on that.
Are there updates through Mark lately on the sidewalk?
On Lake Harbor? I haven't gotten an update from Mark this week, but they have continued this week to, with the curb cutting and the erosion control. I believe next week they'll be out with the, with the curb and sidewalk crew, starting that next week.
It's not raining.
Good weather permitting.
Got anything, Jeff?
Now, as far as those projects, like I said, you know, there's a lot of engineering going on over the district and all that. The floors are closing on being finished over the exhibit space. They called with a couple of questions today. They're in the very far back corner, and they had a couple of questions about some things like that. I said, "You're back there?" And he said, "Yeah." So they're, they're closing in on possibly getting finished with the floors pretty quickly on that. Getting most of the rest of it soon, all in engineering phases. We did meet with a group this week that's getting pricing on finishing out the things that are needed in the greenhouse, the heating and air, the vent hood, bathrooms over there. So they should be getting back to us fairly quickly on that piece. And that's that group that is based off the state contract, so it's already competitively bid through twenty-five different contractors. So we can get, when you, when, when they bring in something that has already been bid, you know, it kind of, it appears to be one, but twenty-five different people have bid on that, and they, they've got, the best prices are, I guess, state contracts, so it's already part, the bid process is already here.
Wait. Obviously, we're going to watch the Braves right after the break. We've got the, the school superintendent, who's going to be here tonight, said he's going to make a presentation to us, otherwise this meeting would be a lot faster. But the, they opened up a senior health center today, Center of, and they're going to open up six to seven in Metro Atlanta. This is the second location. And it's just right across from, you know, the old BB and T, you know, in that right corner. You know, we got Lowe's outlet and a couple others, so they're picking up that, that Lowe's other end cap. Had a chance to tour it today as well, as do their grant open. It's, it's a little bit different in, in terms of, you know, how they're providing the services. They're, they're really senior-based, a lot of wellness programs. There's an activity, Learn Network, that's available to the, the actual community itself for, for some smaller projects. So you don't have to be a senior citizen to go over there and have discussions. But it's, it's more of a holistic approach. These are better words than that. There, there was three inspirational speakers that this morning, I was not running those three, so that was important to know. But if you get a chance, or if that's a service that you have an interest in, just look them up online. I, I think they're going to be a really nice addition to the city. And I'm not trying to steal their thunder, but, you know, it's not like I'm expecting the city council to even go viral of that or anything. But just out of a point of information, they do work with your local community and being able to touch base with something that's already being done, whether or not trying to duplicate it themselves. And the Presbyterian Church, for those who know or don't know, has a food pantry over there. It's had a food pantry over there for many, many years. They gave them a, a grant to be able to expand the capacity of their food pantry, to be able to do some frozen type of foods and work with the, the, the food bank to be able to provide that. And that's, that's pretty cool stuff. So to be able to get, you know, some additional facilities and some other things going on, that, that's really nice. And I don't know why they're all running.
There's somebody walking back there.
Hello. This is making nerves. I've been good this week.
It's, it's Miss Goody. That's why.
So, but anyway, that, that's really good, you know, for, you know, the food bank as well as, you know, citizens in Maro that have a need, you know, out of your capacity. It's a little bit different. It gives them the ability to hold that food stuff a little bit more. We know we have about thirty minutes before the council meeting. We did anticipate having a short council meeting anyway, just in the beginning, we were going to go watch the Braves win tonight. So we didn't expect to have an extra thirty minutes of anybody's time. Good to see. And any comments from the office? We'll, we'll have to take citizens' comments now, but we'll only have to worry about that later. So keep it quiet. Everybody's looking at the Braves all in that, but I don't want to be on that. I'll tell you what, why don't we?
Why didn't you say those two people are absent, that we don't have a quorum? I missed that.
All, all we know is they are both feeling ill and is calling in sick. So you know what I know.
What is the status of, of the, the tower, the water tower? I mean, are we going to just postpone until next year?
No, no, no. Water tower itself, as far as the, the logo, is, is working, and that's the MOU is, is pending.
She, so the attorney has. She, so the attorney has to write to him on the phone, she did, she contacted, I sent her an email yesterday, she's got back with me yesterday afternoon, and said she, that I should have it by hand, at least before the end of the week, if not sooner, because there was not a lot of, there wasn't a lot of information to go on with the water authority said, we need an MOU, and I said, well, what do you need an MOU to say? And they said, well, we don't know. And I said, it's kind of tough to write one like that, but basically they wanted an MOU regarding the maintenance of it. So we had to put in writing that we agreed to the water authority's expectations of a contractor, the contractor that Mayor and Council approved already does business with the water authorities, so they already know who this is, so they've already met those expectations, and then the remaining part of MOU says that we will agree to do maintenance on the logo, in other words, when the logo begins to fade ten or twelve years from now, who's going to paint it? You know, the water authority doesn't want to be left with that bill, so we have to agree to, that we'll maintain that piece. So she said she's got the draft, and I have to send it to the water authority, they'll approve it or redline it and send it back, once we get the MOU situated. The company is finishing their other two projects in the county for the water authority right now, I said, we're ready to move as soon as you guys get the MOU situated, so I talked, I told the attorney today, I said, as soon as you get it, and I get it to them, they're ready to pack up and move here and start that.
Other questions? If not, we have coffee right there in that room, and we'll reconvene in about twenty-five minutes.